Good evening, welcome to the Inkster City Council meeting. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Webby Rubens, where?
Little spray. Father God, we come all the way from here in everlasting love. Father, as we gather here together to take care of the business of the city of these, we ask that you guide and you lead us, bind us together with love and worship, and we move forward. In the name of Jesus, we pray amen.
Amen, okay, let's pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You go, Parkman.
That of course. Mayor Patrick Winery. This absent, his excuse absent. Bro Tim Kim Howard.
Here.
George Williams.
Yeah.
Ms. Washington.
Here.
Watley.
Present.
Chisum.
Present.
And Shaw.
Here.
We are here, so we are, it is a call. Okay, we have no closed session items, approval of agenda?
So move on to the chair.
We have a second, support. Support of agenda. Second. So this, the approval of agenda is gonna be, well, once we get to the items, if you want, just clarify that you want some taken off or tableed until next meeting?
If you're talking about since he's not here right now.
Correct, because Safe's not here too.
I think that has to be in the form of a motion that is, go ahead.
The Director of Housing is here.
No, we're not talking about that, that agenda item. We're just talking about.
Dr. Grant.
Item C and D, correct? If that's.
Yes, we talked about all three of those things that we wanted explained to us before we.
So is it B, C, D, or just C and D?
It should just be C and D. If that's what this body wants.
Yeah. It should be C and D, yeah. Um, we need like.
Well, I understand, C.
Okay, so it's a motion on the floor, but the maker, which is Councilman Williams. So you should just go ahead and say you'd like to make a motion and wanna table the item C and D.
Yeah, I can.
Okay, go ahead, you gotta make it.
So move. C and D.
These are both.
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Okay, so we gotta, so, okay, we have a motion on the floor that we're gonna table item C and D until Safe became explained. Okay. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? Okay, ayes have it. We have no presentations. Consent agenda? Do I have any support for consent agenda?
So move.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Any nays?
Aye.
Okay, we have one nay. Ayes have it. Okay, we don't have any, anything on the boards in the commission. We don't have any ordinance, so we go right into City Department, New Business.
Okay, A, consider approval of special land use for proposed childcare of seven to twelve children, and R1B, single-family resident, this week, at 2626 Stroming Drive.
Okay, what's this body's question on this?
I think we want to go into discussion, I just want to have.
You gotta make a motion.
Oh, okay. Motion, motion to the other.
The motion is already, somebody got it supported, and somebody got seconded, and then it goes into discussion.
Okay.
I didn't, I didn't hear it down there.
I'm sorry. Once she reads the, once she reads the agenda item, someone has to approve it and someone has to second it, and then we go into discussion after that. So do I have any support on, on this agenda item A?
Second.
You know, any support?
So we're on, we're on item A, she needs somebody to move, and then second it, and we can go into discussion where they get.
What's that?
Yes.
That's the one that the people.
The daycare.
The daycare item.
Okay, so no, because that's the people had some favor and some was against.
Okay, so we, in order for us to discuss it, I need someone to approve it and someone to second it, and then we go into discussion. Like we always do, and I understand what's going on. So we have no support on this?
So move.
Second.
Okay, and it's been moved and seconded, now we in discussion, and you wanna have anything to discuss on this?
Pretty much the questions, we had a few questions during.
Okay.
During the orientation, and want to see if the applicant would be able to.
Okay, is the applicant here?
Yep.
Okay, so can you state your question, because I don't think the applicant was here during the orientation.
Oh, okay, so I guess we just wanted to understand about the childcare facility, and how many children actually be at this daycare. Pretty much how many children be at the daycare, and then how do they plan to do the parking, drop off and pick up for the children?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, I'm Charnell Flurnoy, and I'll be the childcare provider, and it'll be in my home. As far as how many children, there will be a licensing consultant that comes out, and will go by the square footage of the home, and let me know how many children I can take. I'm a group childcare home, which states I can have up to twelve. But the licensed consultant comes out and let me know based on the square footage of that. And as far as parking, I mean, I would have it, all kids won't be dropped off at the same time, of course. You know, it just depends on the timing that the parents need providing care, you know. So, and I would have it organized where they would pull up, pull to the back, drop their children, and, and, you know, proceed. And I have all documents if anybody needs to know anything regarding my, me being qualified to do the childcare.
Yes, also.
Just one question. The only issue with that, when we applied for, was the parking?
The only issue, what, what do you mean, the residents around, surrounding us?
Like, you know, the people were talking for us, and some were talking against it. I said, the only, against it, maybe, maybe CD's answer that. They were talking about the parking, or what, what were some of the things that they were talking against and for? That's very important.
The comments centered around the parking, with the street congestion and potentially the traffic increasing with people dropping and picking up their children, as well as the noise. So there was concern shared around the noise of having children. Many of the people who shared their public comment were retirees, and indicated that, you know, in retirement, they weren't looking to live in a community next to a childcare facility where you would have the child noise that just comes with that. So those were the two areas that all of the public comment that we received really centered on. Obviously, they might have gone into greater detail, but those were the themes of concern.
Well, most of the people in that area, the retirees?
The people who shared their public comment were retirees, and shared it from the perspective of being retirees. I can't speak to whether most of the people living there are retirees.
How many people you say came out to the public hearing?
There were five comments, we received two letters that were read into the public comment.
What was, what was our record, that we supposedly mailed out the people in that area? Okay, on this issue? How many, how many people was, we had supposedly mailed out? Write them to hearing? How many, how many people was that?
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I believe it was something like forty-five homes. I, I don't know the public, you know, we just draw the three hundred foot radius, and then any of the addresses within that, in terms of the occupant and the homeowner, then get mailed the notice. I, that was a couple months ago, I don't remember the exact amount, but that would be my, my guess based off of just a general memory.
Is there anyone else here?
Yes, to the applicant. Have you spent any time, or have you made some sort of overture to the people who are complaining? Because this seems to be somewhat contentious for that area. Have you had any meetings with these people who are concerned to maybe allay their fears, or explain your situation to them at all?
No, other than coming to the meeting, I had no access of who the people were. I didn't have any communication with them.
So no communication with the people in the surrounding area, that is going to be affected by this?
Okay. Okay, does anyone else have any more questions on agenda? Okay, all those in favor? Any nays? Do you have any nays? Okay, let's do a roll call, please.
Lieutenant Chairman, I don't, I don't, I don't know if we're getting our right order, but I think it's a fair, it's an opportunity, fair to the people in that community, I think we need to reschedule another hearing in that area.
Okay, we, we have, we have a motion on the floor.
Counselor, counsel, long as the counsel can be there.
Okay.
Okay, I, I feel like, you know, I, I don't, I don't know what's really happening in there, and you get that many people coming out, talking against it, or some talking for it, you know, we need to know that we're making the right decision.
Okay, well, there's public hearing was, they did have a public.
I understand, I understand.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilman Chisum, because he's the chair.
I was just gonna ask, once, it is some contention, it does sound confusing, if we could back up and have the person who made the motion, amend their motion to petition for a public hearing at city council level? I believe we are in the right, I would ask that the city planner could speak to that, just for more clarity.
The way the ordinance is laid out and the Michigan Planning and Enabling Act, I know we had this discussion at the last city council meeting, it is different with special land uses than zoning amendments. So the Michigan Zoning Enabling Act does allow for additional public hearings at city council. The way that your ordinance is currently written, the special land use is so only really supposed to have the public hearing at the planning commission. Now, if you wanna have a public hearing, or have some sort of awareness around this topic, and have people come speak to that, we can figure out a way to do that. But in terms of the official procedure, the public hearing by the code of ordinances occurs at the planning commission level, and then, you know, we can have public comment available if we wanna just move this to a discussion item at a future meeting.
So person who made the motion could amend their motion to make this a discussion item at a future meeting? Okay. Now, Chairman?
You made, you, you are the mayor.
Oh, I made it.
You.
I made it.
Okay.
And Councilman Washington's supporting. Okay, I would like to amend my motion, and make a motion that we table this and for a discussion, or change this to a discussion for a future meeting. I guess at this point, we would have to pick a date, and, I'm sorry, not pick a, pick a date, but I guess we have support. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, support on this?
Yep.
Second. Any discussion on this before we need to make a date?
I guess now discussing it, set a date.
Okay, maybe. Wouldn't that be for the next conference meeting? Or should be?
Okay, just wanted, neither's a concern, because if we set a hard date, or if we just say table this, then it would be automatic.
Table, you have to, you have to be, you have to return, has, has to come back by the second meeting, or, or the motion dies, if it doesn't. So you wanna have it for two weeks from today?
That would be April third, or the April seventeenth.
That's the, that's the next, that's the next meeting, April the seventeenth?
April the seventeenth, the second Monday, I'm sorry, the third Monday of the month, April third is the first Monday of the month.
Mayor Protim?
Yes.
If I may, I would like to remind the body that the marijuana ordinance public hearing is set for April third.
So here's, here's the thing, now, we table this, it has to come back up two weeks, or the motion dies.
And look, well, we're not tabling, we're just gonna put in the date.
Okay, so you have to remove it. It's what you would have to do. Because if you table anything, it has to come back the second, the, the next meeting, or the motion dies. Yes. Am I saying that right? Yeah. It, it, whatever, whatever you table, has to come back the second, the, the next meeting.
So I need to amend my motion again to remove this until April seventeenth? Is that, no, I'm for clear?
Yes, yeah. You have to go back and remove it, because you can't table it, because if you table, it has to come back the next meeting.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we follow the process.
So you have to reverse your motion.
So I rescind the amended motion, and I would like to amend my original motion to remove this from New Business and put it on the agenda for April seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay, it's good, yes. Support? Okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
So, we're gonna remove that, please. Okay, so now, we only have one agenda item, and that's gonna be item A, that should have been item C. Are we gonna do the B? So we just, okay, so we tabled C and D, so item A would be B. So you can just, that'll put it in the agenda of item B. Okay, it's gonna be item A, because we removed it.
Okay, item B, consider approvals of an offer to purchase one vacant parcel of land located on the east side of Isabel between Beet Street and Carrollaw, in the amount of fifteen hundred to Mr. Jacob.
What's your plan? Okay, it's gonna move, any support?
Support.
Okay, any discussion on this item? Okay, those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? Ayes have it. The item B? It's gonna be item B.
Okay, the consider approval to support the recreational passport and Michigan Natural Resource Trust.
No, no, no. Oh, we need to, we, okay, so we table those.
Okay, so we're.
So we are on item E, but it's actually item B.
Okay.
Okay, because we had to move them up.
Okay. Okay, sorry. Consider approval to authorize complaints of six projects from the city of Inkster to the Inkster Housing Commission via quick claimee for the purchase price of one dollar.
It's your pleasure.
Second.
Okay, with discussion, and we do have Director for the Housing, come here and explain to the body and the audience. Hi, how are you?
Good evening. Good evening, Council. My name is Aaron Cooper, Executive Director of Inkster Housing Commission. What you all see in front of you is, is more of a formality resolution. So Inkster Housing was at one point in time a part of the city, as a unit of the city. Once we separated from the city, what we found here recently, especially as we're going through our redevelopment process, is that our properties are still in the name of the city of Inkster. So we use Greco Title, which is a, a component of American Title Company, so we could do title searches, make sure our properties were free and clear, just like anybody would do as they go to sell a house. Well, it came back the city of Inkster as the ownership of the properties. And so again, the, the issue with that is, we can't do any type of redevelopment, whether it's sales, you know, rebuild, or what have you, until the name is actually in the housing commission. So this is more of a formality, you know, whenever the, the city separated, or the housing commission separated, this probably wasn't done, I mean, who would have thought to do it? But now that we're actually looking at rebuilding, whether it's through demolition, disposition, or sales, you know, it has to have the name of Inkster Housing as the title holder. So these lots here, what you see, there's six projects, project numbers as they call them, they correspond to the six developments within Inkster Housing. LeMoyne One, LeMoyne Two, Canterbury, Demby Terrace, and Twin Towers. So that's what this resolution is. Parc sign. I'm counting on my hand, like, I know I'm missing something, but, but that's what these, these are, they correspond to those parcels. So we worked with the assessor's office here, I think his name was Marwan or something, but he didn't have the, the actual parcel numbers. So we went ahead and paid a title company to get the parcel numbers, the accurate parcel numbers. So that's what you see in front of you.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions? Thank you, Mr. Cooper.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any nays? All right, ayes have it. Okay, we down to public participation? Okay, Ms. Williams with words?
Good afternoon, Mayor Protim, City Council. Okay, anyway, I'm here on behalf of the Inkster Parade. This year will be the, let me see what you have here. Fifty-fourth parade. So I'm hoping that all of y'all attended. Last year, we had some say they didn't know about it, but we got a lot of people that wanna come out and be part of this. So I'm hoping that Mayor and Council could be part of it, okay? Since I'm here, I wanna mention the Derby Day that you guys got a flyer on. Someone else supposed to be here, but they not here, so I'm gonna talk about the Derby Day. The Derby Day is putting on by the Chamber of Commerce, and the Chamber of Commerce sponsored this event so we could raise money for the Summer Fest. Hoping that this Derby Day go well, that we can donate at least ten to fifteen thousand dollars to the Summer Fest. So I'd like to make sure you guys all come and attend that, and if you need any tickets, I do have tickets, so feel free to call me, all y'all know my number. All right?
Thank you, thank you.
Got a flight?
No.
I pass flights everybody.
Today?
Yes, just now. Early.
Oh, okay, yeah, I have fire now. I don't blame you for not wanting to mention how much they cost. Okay, the next one is Evie Dunskey, if I'm pronouncing it right? Duneski, okay, thank you, sorry about that.
Everything I'm speaking about today is a piece I wrote for my meeting with the mayor that never happened, because for lack of better phrasing, he blew me off. This is all concerning a neighbor who's been stalking me and making threats against me and my family. Officer Drew is a part of this, as well as Officer Wilder, Officer Monroe, and Sergeant Vargo. Officer Drew claimed to be a sergeant, which I found out a week later was a lie. Each time he's been out to my house, Officer Drew, he's had one, if not both, Wilder or Monroe accompanying him. Officer Drew, as well as his team that were deployed one fourteen twenty, twenty-three, were bullying me for not wanting to give them my ID. For what would have been the third time, I asked if they could add this incident to the previous complaints, which for some reason was an issue, and this was the reason that they said that they would not comply, and that they would not help me. My neighbor has committed multiple crimes against me and my family and home, and not one, but multiple times, that the officers Drew, Wilder, and Monroe have been on the premises. They have not gotten her ID or her info, leading my family to believe that there must either be a personal connection or an ulterior motive. The Chief of Police told me to personally keep making reports and to keep calling. Every time I make a report, these officers do not collect information. Every time I have gone to get copies, make a report, or talk to the chief, and these officers have been present, they scoff at me, they ridicule me, they bully me, and on top of that, they have proven that they only want to deformate my character every single chance that they get, whether that be in front of other members of society, all the way to the courtroom, which I am getting a ticket for, me, I'm getting a ticket because this woman had splattered something on my windshield, and I had to park in front of the police station, and because the nine-one-one operator told me to. I've been given this ticket by Wilder, who was there the same night that this woman I had called previously before she had attacked me, as well as my property. These officers laughed about me while I was at three AM trying to repair the damages done to my vehicle so I could drive safely. That was the same night that Officer Wilder, accompanied by Officer Drew, had given me a ticket for parking in front of the police station. These officers do not believe in safety, they believe in malicious prosecution of the wrong individuals, individuals, and are allowing crimes to be committed by people all over Inkster. I have video documentation for some of these incidents, as well as a video of the incident that they ignored. The emotional damage, as well as now physical damage that is happening to me and my property in Inkster has now become the police's fault, and should also be, they should also be held responsible for damages that clearly could have been avoided if this was all handled properly. As I said, I had called the police to my residence, and I have a police report, I have all the police reports, and then I had to make another police, police report, because I had asked to go, my mom, if she could send me gas money so I could go to her house at three in the morning, and my neighbor waited for me, plotted on me, threw something on my vehicle, tried to coerce me out of my vehicle so that she could hurt me, and then I had to go to the police station, and then the same officers that were there the first time when I called were the same officers that gave me the ticket.
Okay, I do have Assistant Chief Police sitting right there, if you would like. I would give the information to the mayor.
I'm not, I'm actually, I haven't completed yet, they also won't give me the information.
We have three minutes, this is three minutes that you can stand, you know, sit in front of the podium and talk. But you can speak to her.
They've ignored it, so at this point, I'll just be filing a civil lawsuit after I win this ticket in the courtroom. That's where I'm about to head with this. I already talked to her earlier, just before we started this, apparently nobody noticed.
So do you want me to give any information to the mayor?
You don't have to, because we had a, a meeting set up, and he blew me off. I had a meeting for him last Friday at two PM, and he blew me off. I talked to him the day before, he called my cellphone, called me, said that he wanted to set up a personal, like, personal conference, and then he did not do that, so no.
So is, is your phone number on, on this?
Yes, my phone number is on there.
Okay, so I will give you a call back.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
No, your phone number is, is none.
Because I'll, let her, let her, let her go. So I won't want, no, no, I didn't want everybody to have a phone number, so. But that's what happened. Thank you so much. Next, Helen? Elaine? Pardon me? If you would like.
Hi, how are you? Well, I just wanted to come before you and reiterate some of the comments that.
Speak into the mic, because the kids, they can.
I just wanted to come before you and reiterate some of the comments that were made during the orientation portion of the, tonight. And I am a resident of Inkster, I do live on Stallman, and I just feel that a residential neighborhood should not be turned into a business neighborhood. There are a lot of retirees that live specifically on that block, right next door to the property, and they've been there for many years, and they're not going anywhere. And the street has north side parking only on it, it is very narrow. I know the young lady addressed how her employee would come up into the driveway. There is a bus that comes two doors down from where her property would be located to drop off and pick up children. Those parents bring their children in their cars, and sit there and wait for that bus to come and pick up their children, do the same thing in the afternoon. So when the time, different times of the day span, people go to work between anywhere from six to nine in the morning, they come home during rush hour. Nobody typically comes during the middle of the day to pick up and drop off children, they would all be coming around the same time. Also, the Westwood Park is right at the end of the street, so cars lie down the street into that park during football season especially, they, because they're late, they lie back out of that park. It's a safety issue, I feel, for her children, and I feel that, you know, it's a residential neighborhood, people purchase to be in residential neighborhoods, they don't want businesses there. They don't want a, a neighbor to have a mechanic shop in their garage. They don't want a beauty salon in somebody's basement where cars are coming, and, you know, things happening during businesses. They don't want a beauty salon in somebody's basement where cars are coming and, you know, things happening during businesses. I feel that Inglewood has a lot of business properties that are vacant, that if she came and said, you know, I, can I get this building for offer? And have ample parking and a lovely, lovely place for her to establish her daycare business, that would be wonderful in Inglewood. Instead of, you know, having it in a residential neighborhood. Now, if she had, uh, was a mother and had twelve kids, you know, there would be no choice to, but to, you know, accommodate, but that's not the case, it's a business. And it's about the land use that residents buy in residential neighborhoods because they want it to be residential neighborhoods, not business neighborhoods. And that's what I would like to share with you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Mathis Woodfield.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mathis Woodfield. I'm standing in proxy for my wife and her sister, which their organization is United Sisters Papa. And they do it every month at the Inglewood Complex. And it's been going pretty good, they've been doing it for about a year, and they just trying to get the word out more. Get more people to participate and come out. And we do have flyers, and we do have a date for this Saturday, the twenty-fifth. And we are set up for a date for next month on the twenty-ninth of April. But we do it every month. We just trying to see how we can get the word out more.
Okay, you can give the city clerk the flyers and she can distribute it to us, if that's what you want, and we can put them in the front when people come in to see the hall.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, all right. Janice Rochelle.
Hi, Council.
Hi.
My name is Janice Rochelle. Thanks for allowing us to come up and speak, um, on behalf of our group. We have a group called The Black Butterfly of Al-Anon. And we meet at the library twice a week. And this Al-Anon meeting is for the non-alcoholic, it's for people that are affected by others' alcoholism that may have a family or a friend. So we have a fellowship there, available for the public. And I'm just really grateful to be able to come up here and announce this, to let other people hear what we're doing. Our, our real aim is to try to get a building somewhere, maybe Michigan Avenue, somewhere central in Inglewood so that it's neutral to everyone to feel comfortable about coming there, young, old, whoever. Um, we want to have different rooms in that building, one for NA, one for AA, one for Al-Anon. Chapaholics, Gambleholics, Foodholics, anybody that wants to come and set up a meeting of twelve steps. We have twelve-step Christian meetings as well. So it's a Bible study, but it's based on twelve steps. And, um, we would like to get some type of building, maybe with some recreation. I talked with one man and he told me that there's a little bar. And it has a one-lane bowling alley in it, and I'm like, that would be perfect because it would have a form of recreation in there. You know, so with a pool table and a, and one alley, and a room for meetings, we might be on a roll there. I don't know, but, um, I'm planning on getting a five-on-one C three. I have a proposal already written up to try to get funding for the building, to get it up to code. We just hope that Inglewood might, might find it in your heart to donate us a building, because we don't have any money, but we are saving up for rent. When we do get a building, we'll be paying rent there. Right now, we're in the library for free. Higher power is awesome.
Have you spoken to the mayor?
I spoke with the mayor and the Chief of Police, and they said, sure, we'll donate a building. So we've been showing up, and we're trying to get others to come, and we want to fill that little section in the back up and let you guys know we're, we're here.
Do you have a flyer that, that we can have?
I do have a I didn't bring it, I do have one on my phone, I can send to your phone via text if you like. Okay, wonderful.
Okay, do we want to write?
Okay, just a second.
And what we do is, if, if mayor, you already spoken to the mayor?
Yes.
Okay, so we would give him this information again, and then he would bring it to the body?
Okay. Okay, I'm ready.
Seven-seven-nine. Two-zero-one-one. Okay?
Thank you so much, and I'm Evelyn Gibson, I'm a resident of the Twin Towers also, and this is in November, this will be our second year at the library. So thank you for your concern.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, that's it. Okay, now we are in city park, do you have anything?
No, I can't make such a sound.
City Treasurer, do you have anything? Did I miss you, Miss Cooper? I'm sorry, I don't have a sheet for you, I don't know where you went. Come on, Miss Cooper, I'm sorry. I apologize, Miss Cooper.
That's okay. Mayor Porteen and the board. Hello, everybody. Welcome to Spring. Inglewood Goodfellows, we back on the road. Just gonna let you know that on April the twenty-eighth, we'll be our dish fry. And it'll be at the complex from eleven to four. And, uh, next meeting, I will have the tickets to pass out. So just keep the Goodfellows in mind, giving a early start, so we can have another great year. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Do you have any flyers, uh? Just got the date. Okay, all right. Okay, City Treasurer, you say you didn't have anything? Okay, Mayor and Council, uh, Communication. Councilman Williams, you have anything?
Yeah, I don't, I don't really have anything, but I, I would like to, uh, once, once the, um, I think it'd be your, 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 your tab, right? Tab for the
Planning Commission?
Yeah, Planning Commission. Okay, I mean, when you're getting ready to, um, I like to know, I mean, whenever you're getting ready to do the flyer in the next, for the next public meeting.
Oh, what we voted on this evening was to have a discussion at a future council meeting, not a planning commission meeting.
Yeah, but the plant, the lady from planning that wanted to get a council, right?
But, well, she could potentially lead the discussion.
Yeah.
And provide some more
So what I'm saying is, whatever day the fly, who's gonna get the flyer out, we make sure that people in the community have the flyer. That's what I'm concerned.
Oh, an additional notification?
Yeah.
In addition to the public hearing they had?
Yes.
Uh, I guess that's something we have to decide upon, because when you're talking about putting a flyer out, that's spending money from somebody. You know what I mean, like either the city or the applicant, because I'm just saying. That's something we have to talk about. Ms. Dixon, would you mind giving us clarity on that?
The applicant is initially charged with their application three hundred and fifty dollars to cover the public hearing. Uh, that covers the cost of mailing, the time it takes to compile the addresses, the cost of publishing in the newspaper. Typically, if it's at the request of the city, we don't charge the applicant again, so that would be coming out of city funds directly. If we were to renotice, um, the three hundred feet, which is the typical public hearing, but this is not the official public hearing because that's not the way the code exists, so that would be up to this body to decide if you want to do the additional notification for that additional cost.
I just, I, I would just like, uh, when that meeting takes place, I like the for one, on the council person, I like to be with it.
I believe that, that will occur
With a public hearing. We need to sum it up, we need to talk about. At the public hearing, we setting up a public hearing, am I correct?
No, no. Public, public hearing has already taken place. So what we would have to do is set up a meeting
Okay.
And have residents come out and but here's the thing, we got into this two weeks ago. Um, if they have proved that they sent out letters and then to the app, to the residents, and then the residents came in. Some came, some didn't. I don't know how many you mailed out, but if they doing the proper you see, you know, the channels that they have to do, then maybe we just have to, uh, just set up a meeting, I mean, set up something and have them come in.
But that's what I'm saying, you know.
But it's not a public hearing, because a public hearing has already taken place.
Okay, well, I don't have no problem with that, I mean, you know, what I, what I'm saying is, we'll set up and if the people, pros and the cons come on, on the issue, before we take a final decision.
So once the mayor comes back, then maybe we can speak to him. Um, you can note that down, and maybe we can call, you know, come up with a set, set a date that you want to have this meeting.
Okay, um, I'm confused, because I thought you had set a date.
I, I thought so too, I kind of figured.
I know what that you said, it's the next April seventeen, for eight seventeen.
Yes, April seventeen.
And wasn't, wasn't the, the marijuana on the seventeen?
No, it's on the third.
The third.
Okay, okay, so it's, it's the seventeen, okay.
The meeting with, yeah, it, it's, it's set up for the seventeen, right?
Anybody?
At City Council meeting?
That's the City Council.
Okay.
City Council. You, you need a motion.
No. So what they'll do is just put it in the, um, put it on the website, just like they do any other meeting, and just think what's, what's gonna happen in that meeting.
Well, what I'm saying is, you know, in that area, it's something, you know, so many people in that area, am I correct?
Yeah, so I, I just want to once more kind of go through the process because it seems like maybe there's still a little bit of confusion around that. The reason the ordinance is set up in this way is the planning commission is supposed to be your appointed body that you've entrusted with vetting these projects. Then they provide you their recommendation to you, they hear from the public at that point. We have, at that point, notified all residents and homeowners within three hundred feet of the property, as well as anyone who wants to look at Telegram news, look on the city's website, look on the door, at the front of City Hall. That's, that's how that
In the fairness, in the fairness, you can give us a background of which area it is, and we just get flyers, and then let them know it's gonna be this meeting.
We can do that, I just need instruction because that will, as Councilman Burcham has said, cost, you know, time and extra mailing costs, all of those things to the city, so as long as this body is authorizing that, I'm happy to send out notification again that there will, the fi, the decision will be at City Council at that meeting.
Okay, when we get into talking with funds and stuff, we need to talk to maybe the City Treasurer and find out where's it coming out of. It's, can we take it out of general fund? We just can't authorize something, it don't know what line item is coming out of.
I would say, I would say we have a whole month really before that meeting occurs, so I'll sit down with the city planner first and just talk about some options, and then what we can do is bring it back to council, or what the best option is, whether it's just putting it on the public access channel, the website, and self-promoting it, and making sure those persons who reached out to us get the notification to share amongst themselves. Or we send out an actual, another notification to all the residents within a three-hundred-foot radius. And then we can come back with, say, a cost analysis or whatever the case may be to this body and go from that point.
Is that okay for you?
I, I think the chief is where it is, he's flying it.
We still have to move the flyers up. No, I said, we still have to make the flyers up, is what I'm saying. So it's still gonna be some money involved if we do it that way too, so
I, I would just say, Madam Chair, uh, to the city planner, as soon as you have opportunity, let's talk about it, they can sit down.
And then he can bring it back to us, okay? Thank you. Was that it for you?
Yeah.
Councilwoman, uh, Washington?
Yes, I just have one quick thing tonight, um, I'm gonna get the information of the Capitol person, I'll let them, uh, and give you the information as well, but the building is sitting right there on, um, Glenwood and Henry Road. There's a pile of bricks sitting over there and glass, like, somebody went over there and bust all the glass out of everywhere over there. So like there's trash, bricks, and glass everywhere over there. And it's a pretty fat ice rink over there, so I just want to let Capitol person know, and I'll get the chief, um, doing the best we can. That's all that happens tonight.
Okay, Councilman Watt, uh, Councilwoman Watley?
Uh, yes, Madam Chair. Um, I have several things tonight, the first is, uh, a email I received on a chain from a notice page that I sent out to the ICAN people. And this involves, um, Director Vivin. It says, um, "I live on South Park Drive and have lived here for over forty-five years. Snow plowing during those years was terrible. I must say, during the past three years, I have been impressed with the snow plowing. I would like to recognize everyone for a great job. It's great to have clean streets after the months of snow we've had this, uh, season." That was sent to me on March ninth, and I said I would keep it and read it to you, because it's so stubborn, you know, those kudos from people out in the streets.
Go ahead.
On behalf of my staff.
Okay, yeah, oh, oh, she said everybody, so There you go. Uh huh, you're very welcome. Okay, the next thing I want to talk about is IT. I got your email.
Okay.
I still want to talk about IT, is that okay?
Yeah, I just want to make sure you got, okay.
Yeah, I got it. I was wondering if, um, my colleagues are aware that in the past two months, we've spent over fifty thousand dollars on IT. According to the check register, one year was twenty-six, I mean, one month, January was twenty-six ninety-eight. February was twenty-six nine hundred. And at this rate, we're on track to spend over three hundred thousand dollars this year on IT. The problem I have is we're still experiencing the same problems we've experienced since they came here. We're still getting weird messages from people telling them we owe us money. And now I have difficulty contacting IT because everything on there kicks back when you send them this information, they're getting it. So I'm at a loss as to what to do. Plus, I have a problem with spending that kind of money. And I believe the last time we brought up the fact that they spend this kind of money, we asked if you are paying people and then seeking reimbursement from us that we at least see those sales or those purchases you're making, that you do something of that nature. That hasn't, uh, occurred either. So I would like us to start looking at this, or at least have IT come and make some sort of report to us, or let us know why the, uh, the, uh, prices or the, um, things are spiraling out of hand, because three hundred thousand dollars a year, I don't think we've ever spent that much on IT before. So, uh, we need to look at that as fiduciaries of the city and have them come before us and tell us something. And have them give us some sort of concrete way to reach them when we need to. Because like I said, from the day we got these computers, we had nothing but problems, and they haven't been resolved. So that was the other thing. And the, uh, last thing is, I would like to know when we're going to be introduced to the new planner, but I guess that's a job for, um, the mayor, yeah. We have a new planner, where is Miss Gibson? There's someone that's, that we got hires that was hired here. And he's been here a couple of times in the meeting, but I have not been formally told, and I believe the charter says we get to notify, we get notified of, um, Is he in the, is he in the audience now? I don't think he's in the audience now. Okay, okay. Yeah, but we're supposed to be notified, hires and fighters. Charter says so. So this guy, I guess he's been here for about a month, month and a half now, and no word of him at all. So that would be something I would like to find out, and that's what I think, thank you. All right. Councilman Chisum?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, two things regarding, uh, IT. One was the commu, citywide emergency communication system, or just communication overall. Um, I did receive an email regarding that and the different vendors that are being looked at, so I will be reviewing that. And you all are supposed to be getting this as well, is the process for, I guess, the ticket portal. I know in the past, I'm glad I got this, because in the past, when they talked about the portal process being brought up, I asked if we could be kept in the loop because it happens with employees, but we don't always get kept in the loop. And then when we have issues, we just call people directly, we circumvent the process, because we didn't necessarily know what was in place, and that was shared with me. And that was kind of what, um, Councilwoman Watley was alluding to, when she said she received the email, and you all should be receiving that from IT as well, so. And you all should be receiving that from I T as well, so. Other than that, I have nothing else.
Alright, thank you. Counselor Michelle?
I have nothing, Madam Chair.
Okay, I do have one thing, um. The city clerk had mentioned, um, last council meeting. That we had proposals to look at for the city attorney. And I think that each, she asked us to comply. But the thing was, is that everybody complied to her and not all of us. So we still don't know what dates. People are available. If you guys wanna make a date today, set a date today, since we are here. Um, and then we can give those dates to the city clerk to see if she's available to come in, or she, we really don't. I mean, just to put it together.
When is the city clerk coming back? Monday.
Monday.
Okay, so it'll have to be after Monday, March.
It can be before Mondays, because she really doesn't need to be here. I mean, it's up to you guys. Or when you guys wanna have this meeting, but it's overdue, it's overdue.
I'm available for the rest of the week except Thursday. Thursday I have appointments, but Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday is fine.
I'm available Friday.
Okay, so, and what time Friday?
Anytime Friday.
Okay, so we have two council members that's available on Fridays, so.
I'm only available in the evenings, Tuesday through Friday. I can't do Mondays, that's the council meeting and or planning commission.
So Fridays is gonna have to be dated. Um, Councilman Williams, are you available on Fridays? You don't think so?
I guess it, that's hitting some. Uh, all the dates, that's hitting some.
So if, if, if they set it up for Friday, what time? Six. So can you let us know whether or not you can make it?
How many houses said we can make it?
It's four.
Maybe she got four of me.
Four what?
I said maybe she got four of me. She said I was a meeting before.
No, no, she just asked how many said Friday. So you wanna let us know whether or not we can make it? Okay, so what about a, I'm sorry, so what about another? So Fridays, they said that. They, we are overdue on this, so we actually need to really do this and get it over with. So what about, um. What about Saturday? Saturday morning?
What happened to Friday?
Well, I'm just trying to accommodate him, it's Councilman Williams. Okay, so all of it, all you guys can be here.
Um, are we, can we go into next, the week after that?
You can. I don't, I'm not, I know this is, this is overdue.
Was it, were you able to make it on Friday evening?
For me?
Yes.
Yes, I can make it.
So there's one, two, three, four, five.
There's five of us.
Yeah.
So you guys. Okay, so at six o'clock? Alright then, so that's all I, that's all I have. So can you call for a journal? Call for a journal?
Motion to a journal.
Motion to a journal, alright. All those favor?
Aye.
Okay, I said. Okay, so.